Wait for it. Okay. Yes, let's do that. All right. It is 6:31. I'm going to call to order the session of Cherry Hills Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Safavi?
Here.
Counselor Will?
Happy to be here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Gallagher?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Here.
Counselor Brown?
Here.
Thank you very much. Do the pledge of allegiance, please, if you're all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, audience participation? Hold on a second. Let me get the, see who signed in. If you're first, you could, you can be up. Actually, we have number one is Laura Christman signed up to speak. Laura, you're... Then, Mr. Jim Johnson. Mr. Johnson, here. You have the floor.
Jim Johnson, 4575 South Franklin Street. I've lived there for 20 years, and I'm here to speak a little bit about the code amendments when that issue comes up, but I had it. Would you mind either speaking a little louder into the microphone or...
Or you can take your mask off.
We're okay with you if you want to take off your mask. I'd appreciate it. You're six feet away from me, so I guess that's all good. Anyway, the corner of Quincy and Franklin, there's a lot on the southeast corner there that someone bought. I think it's a two-and-a-half acre lot. And, you know, there was this nice little one-story house there for years, and a lot of very mature trees. And the new owner came along and cut down all the trees on the site. I'm sure many of you have probably seen it. And I think it just cuts away, literally, at the character of old Cherry Hills Village in particular, and Cherry Hills in general. And I understand, you know, the right of a property owner, rights of a property owner. But a suggestion that I have for you is that within the setback distance of a property... So, for example, on that two-and-a-half acre site, on both streets are either, you know, collectors or arterials, there is a 50-foot setback. So, would it do any harm to have a regulation within the city to prohibit people from cutting down mature trees or any trees within the building setback area? In other words, it does not inhibit their ability to build whatever they want on the property within the confines and regulations of the city zoning requirements, which are all good. So, it's a suggestion that I have for you. I don't know how that process would start, but I sure think it would be helpful to the character of the city and beneficial to the earth and honestly, all of the citizens that live here to have a little bit of shade and shadow and, you know, mature vegetation. So, anyway, that's just a suggestion. I don't know if you have any thoughts or questions during my 2 minutes and 41 seconds.
Thank you very much. We actually will follow up and will contact the city manager or Mr. Workman about that because we do have an ordinance and we can explain how that tree ordinance works. Happy to revisit it, though, and explain to you how that works, and that may be useful. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Yeah, my understanding is the tree ordinance has to do with planting new trees, but it doesn't really talk about existing trees. And I think you also have to have some sort of component to that regulation that says, if the tree is diseased, then that's a different story, right?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you for coming. Mr. Foster, I assume you want to wait, too? Is that right? Okay. Next, Judith Judd and Jenny Carpenter. You can come up together if you like, or...
Counsel, staff, all of whom I'm beginning to get to know. I'm, I'm here to speak about the code, and I'm not very deeply informed about it. So, this is just a plea to be consistent with what we had before with respect to horses and bees. We have those, we have bees right now on Quincy Farm, and we want to make sure we can keep them. It's one of our most popular programs, and the horse provision, too. And I think there may be some confusion about the language and making sure we track to what we had before. So, it's a plea to do that, and I'm supporting Laura's work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for coming tonight. Jenny, did you have something, too?
Hi, this is Jenny Carpenter at Nine Random Road. Good evening, everybody. I'll be very quick. I'm also in support of making sure we have inadvertently changed code that we didn't intend to change about bees and horses in the village. And I did want to also echo Mr. Johnson's suggestion of when we think about tree canopy and our current policies of how do we preserve the visual beauty, the tree canopy in our community, those are all things that, as those of us going through this master plan process, I think we've heard loud and clear what people value. We may need to rethink some of those policies because mature, I think we're realizing that mature trees are going to be harder and harder to have, healthy trees going forward as we look at climate change, the cost of water, all those things. So, I just hope we're looking forward and thinking about how difficult it is to replace those once they're gone. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments tonight. Anyone else who didn't sign up, you're welcome to speak now if you like. Go home later. Go home now. No. Okay, move on to reports from city boards. I don't see anybody here. So, we'll pass on five. Item six, consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second, I'd like to actually pull...
Do you actually pull the minutes, huh, do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I rescind that motion.
Counselor Sheldon, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'd just like to pull the minutes noting that I was absent at the last meeting and therefore would not like to be voting on them.
And I move to approve the item 6A, the minutes from January 18th, 2022.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. Unfinished business. This is honey manager Workman. You have the floor. This is council bill 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, series 2022, amending chapters 2, 16, 17, 18, and 20 of the Cherry Hills Village municipal code, and this is the second and final reading.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As you just mentioned, Mr. Mayor, this is the second and final reading of the proposed housekeeping land use amendments. The first reading for these was January 4th of this year, and just like at the first reading, please don't feel obligated to wait to the end of the presentation to ask questions or, or jump in. It'll be easier and probably more productive if, if we have those discussions as we run through the slide deck here. At first reading, council heard 19 proposed amendments across five chapters of the municipal code. They were chapters 2, 16, 17, 18, and 20. The amendments to chapters 2, 17, 18, and 20 were approved on first reading with no changes from council. Therefore, no changes to those amendments have been made between first and second reading, and tonight's presentation will focus on the amendments that council identified for discussion at first reading. Within the proposed amendments in chapter 16, council asked for additional information on general animal regulations. That information was provided as exhibit G in your packet. Council directed the removal and future discussion of the amendment that contemplated accessory structures on lots without a primary structure. This proposed amendment has been removed from consideration, and the following amendments in chapter 16 have been renumbered. Council requested more information as well as some options related to public publication and notification of public hearing for land use cases. That information was provided as exhibit H in your packet. And finally, the definition of a primary structure was to be amended. These will be the focus for tonight's discussion. First is related to horses and animal husbandry. Before we get into the specifics of this, as was outlined in your packet, this evening, the city does not have a limit on the number of animals you can own, as long as they're not prohibited under chapter 7 of the city's municipal ordinance. For council's benefit, the language highlighted in yellow on the screen is new since first reading but was included in your packet. The language highlighted in green is new since first reading and was not included in your staff report. It represents information that was discovered by staff as well as language that was collaborated on with a member of the community. And just for council's benefit, I will flip back and forth between some slides here just for some illustrative purposes. Before we get into the details, though, I do want to reemphasize the purpose of housekeeping amendments. They really serve three purposes. One is to create additional clarity, one is to correct inadvertent omissions, and also to create consistency within the document. This proposed amendment is intended to correct an inadvertent omission that occurred with the code modernization in 2019. It is intended to restore the ability to have horses in the village as they have been historically allowed. Prior to the modernization in 2019, there was no land use table. Rather, each zone district was its own section of the code, and the allowed uses for each zone district were listed in that specific section. The R1 zone district allowed, end of quote, agriculture, agricultural, including nurseries, raising of livestock and poultry, and orchards provided that no such agricultural use be permitted if offensive or injurious because of odor, noise, or other nuisance. The normal odors associated, excuse me, the normal odors, noises, and other side effects of animal keeping shall not be considered nuisance except for provided in chapter 7 of Article 2 of this code. Commercial activities such as greenhouses, nurseries, fur farms, truck gardens, farms operated for the disposal of garbage, animal kennels or stables shall not be permitted except that a maximum of two horses not owned by the resident of the involved property may be boarded and stabled on that property without such boarding and stabling being regarded as a commercial activity, end quote. Pre-modernization, chapter 16 did not have a definition for livestock, and since horses are referenced for the purpose of boarding, it is logical to assume that horses were considered livestock. The allowed uses in the R2 and the R3 zone district were, quote, "The following uses shall be permitted in the R2," or, in the case of R3 zone district, "any use permitted in the R1 two-and-a-half acre residential district," end quote. In 2019, the code modernization created the land use table that is in effect today and a portion of which is on the slide in front of you. It also created the term agricultural livestock. As part of the modernization as well, two definitions were added. A definition for livestock, and it reads, means cattle, llamas, apacas, sheep, goats, pigs, rabbits, chickens, turkeys, pheasants, ducks, and other animals when raised for the purpose of commercial food or fiber production. The term livestock does not include bees, donkeys, horses, or mules, nor does it include animals that produce food or fiber exclusively for domestic consumption by the animal's owner. The second definition that was created was for agricultural livestock, and that is the line item in the land use table that describes allowed uses within the different zone districts. This definition means animal husbandry, agriculture involving fish or invertebrates, raising livestock, or milking dairy cows or goats for commercial purposes with no onsite slaughter, processing of meat, meat products, or retail sales of agricultural products. The phrase agricultural livestock does not include the phrase intensive agriculture or community garden. Since the term for agricultural livestock is defined and specifically is silent on horses and bees and donkeys and mules, and the term livestock, which was in the broader term of agricultural livestock specifically excludes horses, bees, donkeys, or mules, it's staff's interpretation that horses were inadvertently made so that they are not allowed. So, as not to inadvertently change the impact of the term livestock as it may be used in other sections of chapter 16, staff has proposed a definition for the term animal husbandry since it is currently undefined. The proposed definition for animal husbandry has been intentionally written broadly so that horses could be allowed under this definition, and it reads, "Animal husbandry means the rearing of animals for the sole purpose of the enjoyment of the property owner with no intent to use the animal or parts of the animal for any commercial or charitable purpose." Council will hear from the, from the public this evening that this definition is too restrictive. Staff would offer that the language clearly states for the sole purpose of the enjoyment of the property owner and not for the sole use of the property owner. Additionally, the phrase charitable purposes was included as some charitable events can have the same externalities such as parking or odor or noise as commercial operations. This is intended to give the city the ability to enforce on either commercial or charitable events on even footing. For those animals that are used as a one-time or sporadic purpose such as a prize-riding lesson from a silent auction would not rise to the level of a charitable purpose. Going back to the land use table, some things that are different from first reading. It was staff's understanding that horses were historically allowed in the R3A zone district, which is essentially the Beul neighborhood and the Covington neighborhood. For lots that are one acre or more in size, that was based on a misunderstanding in terms of how you read the uses for an R3A zone district in the prior code, which stated, "The following uses shall be permitted in the R3A district, any use permitted in the R1 two-and-a-half acre residential district except churches, schools, and agriculture," which was previously stated in the presentation. The table has been updated for accuracy. Additionally, there was some discussion amongst council at first reading whether or not one acre was an appropriate size. At the time of first reading, staff was understanding that had been the historical threshold for having horses or other livestock in the R3 zone district, but staff believes this may have been codified, a codified standard at one time but was a policy in 2019. For the benefit of council, as with any of this language, council has the prerogative to change the proposed language of one acre or more being the threshold. If council desires to keep the threshold at one acre or more, staff has added language to clarify that the lot size would include the adjacent right-of-way as allowed by section 16940 of our code. And again, in summary of this particular amendment, the intent of this amendment is to, is to resolve the previously omitted ability to have horses, and that really is the intent and the goal of this ordinance. And before we move on to the next one, I will pause and see if there is council discussion at this point.
Any questions for staff?
I do have one. Paul, thanks. Good, good presentation. Do you, do you have any indication as to how many lots are in Beul or Covington that would fall under this criteria that could potentially hit the one acre mark that are currently, within their lot lines, not one acre, but would be if you included the right-of-way to the center of the, of the dedicated right-of-way?
Sure, the, that analysis was done. I don't remember the exact numbers off the top of my head, but there are a handful of lots, maybe, say, 10, 12.
And are there, is this a practical problem that we're trying to solve? Do we have owners in those communities that are potentially looking to have horses?
In the Beul and the Covington neighborhoods? No.
No.
Okay.
Paul, to be R3, the definition of R3 is what specifically? I mean, it's one acre, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Right, so if something's coded or it is zoned R3 at this time, and here's where I'm going. The concern is that you've got properties that need that 16-9...
The 16940?
Yeah, to, to hit that mark, and what, what if there are properties, well, I guess historically, if they are R3, they've met the mark. Is that a safe assumption?
I wouldn't say that's a safe assumption. I would say properties generally should meet that requirement. Are there a handful of lots that are substandard? Most likely, even when you include the adjacent right-of-way, just due to the nature of how old some of those lots are.
And, and that would be my concern, is that you've got a handful of properties that might historically be horse properties at this time, and we're hurting those people potentially if they're not going to meet that standard. And so, for council's discussion, you know, do we want to, we could solve it simply by saying, if it's R3, it's good. If it's coded R3, it's good, and, and stay away from the one acre mark. So, we pick up the...
Absolutely. Counsel could do that. Absolutely.
That's, and that's my point, is that, you know, if they're already R3, then regardless of how big they actually are, let's give it to them.
And I would offer that regardless, if, if, if there were no size limitation, that would not impact their requirement to, to not be a nuisance under chapter 7 of the code. They would still have to meet those requirements.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, if you choose to put 10 horses in that space, then yes, you can do that. 10 horses that you own, you can do that, but by gosh, you may have other issues that are quickly coming to, to the forefront, so.
Question. Counselor Brown?
So, to make sure I understand that correctly, R3, generally speaking, is a minimum one acre lot?
That's correct.
So, really, the qualifier is unnecessary. If we have, the lot size qualifier is unnecessary. There may be some non-conforming R3 lots out there, but they've been there for years.
Decades, probably.
Okay. And R3A is now, we're taking agriculture out of that. And that does, not that we control this in any way, but does anyone know if those HOAs even allow?
They're prohibited by the HOAs.
Yeah, so no one should be affected by that because that wasn't allowed to begin with. Okay. And then, explain exactly what happened to the maximum of two horses not owned by the owner? Where, where did that go and why?
I can't answer the second half of that question because it was done part of the code modernization, but that, that requirement is the reference to also see section 162730. That is where regulations reside related to horse boarding and training.
Okay, I just meant in the first, in the first reading packet, we had a statement, we had a sentence at the end there that said, "A maximum of two horses not owned by the owner of the property may be boarded and stabled." See also block, and so I guess we just felt like maybe it wasn't even necessary to restate that there because we're just stating it here. Okay.
It was unnecessary to say it twice. Correct.
Got it. Okay. Those are my questions about that.
Questions. Counselor Will or Counselor Safavi? All right. What, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Can you give me a, just sort of a conceptual view of what went away with code modernization and what are we bringing back? Is it expanding anything? Is it contracting anything versus the pre-code modernization world?
As it relates specifically to this amendment or just in general?
This amendment.
No, the intention of this amendment is to return the ability to have horses as it was pre-moderniz- it was pre-modernization in 2019. That is the intent of this ordinance.
Well done.
You have the floor. Ms. Ruttman.
Sorry. Can I ask one more question about that?
Sure.
Kind of to Randy's point then. What, remind me what the change was that made people not able to have horses?
So in, in 2019, in the Chapter 16, which is the zoning ordinance, there was no definition for livestock.
Okay.
Okay? However, the allowed uses referenced the rearing of livestock. And it's an inference that because horses were specifically called out for boarding purposes.
Excluded, right.
That they were, they were considered under the umbrella of livestock. With the adoption of the code modernization in 2019, there were the two definitions on the screen that were added to the code modernization. The definition for livestock specifically excludes those, those animals.
Okay.
And there's no mention of it in the livestock.
Right. So these tables were in there where it says agriculture livestock and it said allowed, allowed, you know, allowed.
There was no, there was no table.
But the problem was that livestock specifically said that doesn't mean horses. So.
In this, in this, in the current version of our code, that's correct.
Yeah, that's the problem that we're trying to?
That is the problem we're trying to solve.
Yes. Okay.
One more question. Paul, the regarding bees, there's, there are no issues, right?
Again, because the definition for animal husbandry, which is not currently defined in the code, was written so broadly that it just talks about animals in general, any animal would qualify under that definition for animal husbandry, including bees, mules.
Is a bee an animal?
It's an insect, which is a type of animal.
Insect, though.
So for intents and purposes, it's, it's, we're back to where we started.
That is the intention of this, of this amendment.
Okay.
Now, I will say that it is likely that staff will bring a polish of this, if you will, before council at some point in the future, just really to make sure, because this is such an important issue to the community and is part of the, the character and the fabric of our community, to make sure that this is, is really polished and, and gets us there. We as staff believe this does that, but it may need some polishing in the future.
Are you going to move to Council Bill 2 then?
Okay.
So where, sorry, where are bees? I remember having a conversation about bees years ago. Where are they allowed? Where were they allowed in the previous code?
It would be my opinion that they would still be considered as part of the agricultural definition and allowed in the R1, R2, R3, whatever the, whatever the code would have referenced at that time.
Okay.
I'll give you a minute, Councilmember.
No, that's not, yeah, we're good.
Okay.
I just remember that discussion pretty vividly and I want to make sure that we're not now leaving them out of some place that they used to be allowed, that they're not allowed now since, you know, you can have bees but not horses.
Well, and, and I remember that discussion because so much of it came down to, you know, what trumps, you know, HOAs, you know, I mean, there's this hierarchy of, of controls and, and HOAs, you know, could, could say, "We're not going to have bees in our, in our neighborhood." And, and that, even though they were allowed in the code, the HOA would, would stop that.
The, the next amendment before you this evening is proposed amendment number four. This had, this was related to publication and notification requirements. As stated in your packet this evening, staff has not proposed any changes from first reading as it's still staff's recommendation to council. However, there are options provided for council this evening and, and we will run through those. As a refresher for council, the column on the left shows the current notification requirements for land use applications. As you can see, there are two types of notification, excuse me, two types of notification for publication and two types of notification for mailing. Which one of the two options is required is currently identified in Table 16-7-255D and based on application type. Having two separate types of notification can lead to confusion for applicants, staff, and the community. This is particularly true when it comes to multiple or sister applications. If somebody has two or three applications that require both notifications, it can get really confusing. Why, why did my neighbor get one? Why didn't I? Why did they get one for zoning and I only got one for subdivision? And so it just creates some confusion. The column on the right shows what the proposed notification requirements for land use applications would be regardless of application type, should council decide to move forward as proposed. As part of the homework between first and second reading, council asked staff to provide some information related to visits to the city's website. In 2021, the, the website received just under 90,000 visits. Thirty-seven percent, or excuse me, 34% of that was on a mobile device. The top visited page was the city's Agenda Center, followed by the Form Center, followed by the Document Center, and then building permits, and then the Police Department, and then sales tax. Council also asked for staff to reach out to the Villager regarding their subscription information. We did reach out to them and ask for that information. They responded that their subscription numbers are confidential, but their website receives approximately 20,000, 23,000 visits a month and the legal notifications are posted on that website. Additionally, staff researched 10 other Denver area metro communities and how they approach publication and notification. The average days of publication before hearing were 11.8 days. Five municipalities allow posting on the website. Four municipalities allow posting in a newspaper of general circulation, and one community allows either format. The average days of posting before hearing is 12.6 days. The average days of mailing before the hearing is 13.1 days. And the average distance of mailing was 812 and a half feet. Communities that only notice adjacent property owners were two. Based on this information, staff has created this list of potential alternatives. They certainly are not the only alternatives that are available. They're just ones that seem the most obvious. And they are listed in staff's, in order of staff's recommendation to council. The first is change the requirements consistent with the proposed language from first reading. Potential pros for this approach is it creates consistency for publication and notification across application types, reduces the publication lead time and is no cost. No paper subscription is required to obtain published notice. It's consistent with the industry standard to publish notification on the city's website. Potential cons with this approach is it requires residents to proactively visit the city's website to obtain published notice. Second option would be to change the requirement consistent with the proposed language from first reading but increase the distance of the required mailing. Again, right now, it's a thousand feet or adjacent depending on what mailing type is required. Potential pros of this is that it creates consistency for publication and notification across application types, reduces the publication lead time and is no cost. There's no paper, no paper subscription required to obtain published notice. It's consistent with industry trend to publish notification on the city's website, and it actively notices more property owners. I want to emphasize actively notices. Publishing is a passive way of noticing where mailing is more of a proactive way of noticing. Potential cons in this is that there are increased costs to the applicant. Property owners may get confused as to why they are receiving notice for an application that is, in their opinion, not near them. And it may be required to notify property owners outside of the city on a more regular basis. The third option would be to only change the requirements so that there's one set of public notification requirements with no changes to the format of the publication, i.e., keeping it published in a newspaper of general circulation here in the village. Potential pros with this is that it creates consistency for publication and notification across application types. Potential cons are publication has a long lead time and is a cost to the applicant, requires a paper, paper subscription to receive the public notice, published notice. Then the fourth option, as always, council has the option to do nothing. The pro with this approach is that publication and notification are consistent with historic And that's the presentation for this particular amendment. I will pause for another moment and see if there are council questions or discussion.
Any questions for staff?
It could be, it could be a combination of two and three theoretically. I mean, these are not binary options here, right?
Absolutely not. And in that same vein, council doesn't have to make a decision right this second on this. It's just, we'll move on to the next topic. And so if there's something that you don't want to forget to mention, this would be a good opportunity to do that.
I think 90,000 visits in a year cements for me that more is more, as I said at the last meeting. And asking people to publish in the newspaper is not burdensome. It's not expensive. Everyone's used to doing it. And if it reaches a few more people, then that's better, in my opinion.
I think it should be published both on, both on the website and in the newspaper.
And we should have someone walking around town yelling it out loud. And on the side of bicycles and buses.
And one thing we did talk about last time in January was, at first reading, was what that distance should be. I, I think 1,500 feet is probably not an unreasonable increase to a total of 1,500, if we wanted to increase the, the radius as well.
Okay. Mr.?
Just a clarifying question for Counselwoman Brown. So currently, the code gives the option for publication on the website. Would you be interested in formalizing that as a requirement or leave it as an option? It doesn't satisfy the publication requirement, but it is what the code calls a courtesy notification.
Right. We, we do currently put them on our website. So I think it should be both. Yeah. And we need a literal village crier.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Ms. Ruttman?
Just a quick question. So the 90,000 visits, is that to our website or is it to the actual site of the posting?
That would be to the website.
The website.
Right.
So, you know, that 90,000, then, for me at least, when I heard 90,000, I was like, "This is awesome." But if they don't go, I go visit our website, probably I've done it 20 times. But I've not gone to the public notice personally.
Right.
So for me, that 90,000, at least for this purpose, is sort of irrelevant.
Sure.
But thank you.
Absolutely.
And that's for a whole year. 90,000 for a whole year.
That's, and, and that's part of why staff wanted to just provide the information for, for council for, I was going to say informational purposes, but that sounds redundant. The next amendment is the definition to accessory structure. And really, this was just a removal of the language that's highlighted there in yellow because the proposed amendment related to accessory structures on primary structures was removed from consideration. This amendment was updated so that that reference is not there. And then the last one before council this evening that we've talked about in detail is related to the definition of principal structure. Council may recall that the code does not currently have a definition for principal structure. And so in order to have one, there was some draft language proposed at the last meeting. And there was some, some discussion on council about how potentially to revise that definition and make it a little shorter.
So I did look at this. I think we're still missing a little bit when we say the one structure that is used for public or private purposes. Because lots of properties have more than one structure that's used for public, I mean, a pool house is also a structure that's used for a private purpose, but it's not the principal structure. So the one doesn't really, that's not the right word. It's like?
Qualifier or an addition, something, making this up on the spot. Principal structure means the one structure that is mostly or mainly used for something, is that where you're headed?
I don't know. It's, it's got to be the, yeah, I mean, it's like using its own words to define itself. And I think we all know what it means. We just can't put it into words. But a house is a, is a structure that's used for a private purpose, so is a pool house. But a pool house is not a principal structure. Why?
Do we have a definition of accessory use? Wouldn't that define that?
That was over there.
Is there a definition of accessory?
Detached subordinate structure located on the same lot as a principal structure.
Right. To me, that, that would be subordinate structure.
Just a thought, Counselwoman Brown. What you're trying to say maybe could be captured by the one structure that facilitates the primary use of the property?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that getting where you're trying to go?
Yeah.
Again, a little on the fly.
Is that acceptable? I think that doesn't. I think that ties it to the primary use and does it well. An accessory to that, something is an accessory to their primary use. All right. I think we can probably make that. Sounds like you have consensus on that. Any other things from your presentation, Mr. Ruttman?
No, Mr. Mayor. That would be the conclusion. The only thing for the benefit of council, the recommended motion for each of the council bills is located in your packet on page 18.
Perfect. All right. I'm going to, if there are no more questions for staff, then I'm going to take, I know some people here wanted to speak to this and I'm willing to do that now and entertain comments if you wish. You're very good. New job.
Laura Christman, Laura Christman, 18 Cherry Lane Drive. I am speaking to the amendments, particularly the amendment with regard to, I'm sorry.
There you go.
I'm sorry.
That's better.
With regard to the use of horses. I do appreciate, thank you, Paul, the concern that we go back to the uses we had before this new modern, excuse me, modernization. And I do think in large part it does that. But here's where I think that it is a substantial and material change, and it is not a housekeeping item at all. And that is the language that says animal husbandry means the rearing of animals for the sole, and I want to emphasize sole purpose. That is the language in the proposed amendment, of the enjoyment of the property owner with no intent to use the animal or parts of the animal. I'll go to livestock in a minute. For any commercial or charitable purpose with any would also modify charitable. We have never restricted the use of our horses or our livestock or our bees for charitable purposes, ever. So to me, that is a very, very substantial change. How does that affect some of our owners, horse owners? We have horse owners who have horses that are only used for charitable purposes. We have minis and they, and we have, there are actually a couple of our minis are pretty famous. They go all over the region, dealing with charities, children, nursing homes, schools. My pony is 75% charitable purposes. It isn't a once-in-awhile event for him. He really can't be used for much else because he's almost 25 years old. He's very popular with handicapped children. He's soft. He's fuzzy. He's soft, he's fuzzy, he loves them. I don't think that we are a community that wants to stop that. I do know and understand that this arose from some concern about therapy children coming into the village and riding horses for horse therapy because it caused parking problems. I do think we can deal with parking problems, but I don't think we are a community, community that says, do not bring those children into Cherry Hills. Do not let them interact with our horses. And this is not just horses, this is all livestock. This is our chickens, our goats, if we have, I think we've got a few sheep and alpaca out there. This is kind of who we are, and, and charity, and reaching out to the community is who we are. So I don't think this is, is housekeeping. I think this is extremely important. Let me talk about the commercial restriction in here. And I, and I do think you just need to flesh this out. I don't really think people are using horses for commercial purposes, at least, no one seems to be able to get egg designation on that. But I do think that there are some people using bees. They make all kinds of cool stuff out of the wax and the honey. They may give it away, charitable, or they may go to a market and sell it, and we've never objected to people doing that. So that is a commercial use, technically, the tent is commercial. But it's, it's a change from what we've historically done. And I think that these are policy issues, that if we want to discuss them further, they should have a great deal of open discussion. I don't think they're housekeeping. So that's my concern about this language. It does not return us to where we were. It further restricts us, and it restricts us in a way that I think doesn't speak well of us as a community, especially with respect to charity. And I know we're not like that, so, and I, I think that's an inadvertent, could be an inadvertent result. I just want to speak very briefly on the notice provisions. I agree with all of you who believe the more notice, the better. We do have a community that sometimes doesn't pay attention like this until it's almost too late, and then they feel betrayed. At least if they, if it's on the website, you send them a letter, tell them how to get to the website notice, and it's publicized, you have really done a lot to help people in this community. We don't need to be like other communities, we can reach out more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Christman. Mr. Johnson, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, please, very briefly, I, I support and agree with what Ms. Christman said. And there's another, one thing that I want to make sure of that we don't overlook is the sole enjoyment terminology. Because, for example, I'll just tell you, 4th of July parade in Old Cherry Hills, people use horses with buggies behind them, and somebody owns the horse, but they're, have, they're, you know, riding people around the blocks in the street that don't own the horse. So that would be, other than sole enjoyment, I just would hate to forget anything like that.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, did you want to add anything?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of counsel, David Foster, 360 South Garfield. Just wanted to address a couple of issues in the proposed code amendments. And it's really easy for me, as a land use attorney, to show up after people have spent so much time revising and drafting these amendments to kind of identify some, some particular issues. So I recognize that I am probably not being too, too fair with, with these comments, but let me speak to a couple of issues. The first is what Laura just addressed in terms of the definition of husbandry. I just don't read it the same way you do, Paul. I think it is open to far more interpretations, as Laura had identified, and I would just encourage you to tweak the language of husbandry, even to add accessory to, to that language could go a long way. But it gave me an opportunity, as I was reviewing the code as it relates to equestrian uses, that you've got some significant conflicts within your existing code that this might be an opportunity to clean up. For example, you have, even in the proposed update under this First Amendment, it reads, clarify that horses and equestrian facilities are allowed in R1 and R2 zone districts. I, I'm kind of curious, I, I read the code that allows equestrian facilities and stables only allowed in O1 and O2, and O1 is conditional. If equestrian facilities are allowed in R1 and R2, maybe you want to clear that up in your code. Again, I, I think this is an opportunity to clarify some of these issues. The, another issue that I've identified is you have, and you make reference to Section 162730, limited horse boarding, equestrian training. Equestrian training is another term that's used in the code, that's not defined. Equestrian facilities is also used in the code, that's not defined. And under this section, 162730, equestrian training, we speak to, equestrian training is allowed as an accessory use to a single-family detached dwelling unit. So that's an accessory use to a structure, not even to a use. And it goes on to describe the equestrian training does not involve more than 12 horses at a time, which speaks to me as something that is closer to commercial use, which again, when you go back to husbandry definition, is going to be prohibited, even though under this section of your code, limited horse boarding, equestrian training is allowed in those very same zone districts that we were just talking about. So you have this conflict, and then I, I would suggest that there, there are probably a few of these cleanup issues, just with Amendment Number One and Amendment Number 6.2 under Council Bill Two, that we would hope that you would consider tabling tonight, modify those and bring them back. And I don't think there's that much cleanup that's necessary. That would be my, my hope. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Hi, Janie Carpenter, Nine Random Road. And let me start off by saying I am not an attorney, so I'm asking a more general question of making sure I am understanding correctly. The language of not for commercial or charitable purposes, my question relates to how and whether that would apply to Quincy Farm. And if, for example, if the Cherry Hills Land Preserve, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, were to do an education program around bees, which we do, equestrian, we might, chickens, things like that, would we be able to do that? That would be a charitable purpose if it's doing it for the community by a nonprofit, I presume. So I didn't want to make sure that we don't get sideways on what uses we've anticipated or might want to keep open for Quincy Farm for the community benefit. And then the other question I had, which I don't know the answer to, is I'm not sure what the zoning is for the Village Club. That would be a commercial, you know, that is a nonprofit, not a 501(c)(3) is my understanding, but I don't know how that fits in making sure that doesn't get tripped up with our definitions. Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter, I, I do think that there's going to be some cleanup currently, you know, we can, we can move tonight and get this done and on second reading, but there's clearly going to be some things coming back that need to be fixed, so I understand that. And I just want to get, Mr. Ruttman, if you want to comment about that as well?
Yeah, absolutely. The, again, the intent is primarily to restore the ability to have horses in the village. That's the primary intent, and Ms. Christman and I have, have had very good conversations here in the last couple of days. And, and we fully intend to bring a polished version of this, again, back before counsel at some point in, in 2022.
Any more questions for staff before we move on?
When we talk about bringing back a polished version to counsel, are you, you're saying that under the assumption that we may pass this tonight as written?
That's correct.
Why, why wouldn't we want to clean it up?
I'm sorry, sir, can you ask that?
Why wouldn't we want to make the adjustments and vote on it?
I'm sorry, I still didn't hear you.
Why wouldn't we want to go ahead and clean up this version and then vote on it, rather than vote on it tonight and clean it up subsequently? Because that sort of puts an indefinite period of time between when we, you know.
The challenge with, with doing, doing it later is right now, the code would not allow for horses, and God forbid if there were some disaster, folks may not be able to bring horses back to their property until that amendment were passed.
And so, I mean, let's quantify this, or that, I think the, the chances of a disaster happening and people not being able to bring their horses back, and if they, if that did happen, I'm wondering if there's some kind of emergency declaration that this council could make in order to effectuate those horses coming back. It seems silly to go ahead and approve this at second reading tonight, this portion at least, if we're going to just go ahead and knowingly rewrite it here over the course of the next 60 days. That seems like a, kind of like an exercise that we should not go through.
City Attorney has a comment.
Well, I would just like to weigh in and say, I don't think anyone here thinks that this is the last and final word, or that all problems will be cured by whatever can be come up, can be come up with tonight. I think Mr. Foster's pointed out a couple of things that we're well aware of, that there needs to be a more thorough scouring of the stables, as it were, on the code on this. Sorry, I couldn't resist. We do have a bit of an Aegean stables problem on the wording of our code. So I, I do think there's a thorough cleansing that needs to happen, but that was not the intent of tonight's ordinance. So it's up to the pleasure of counsel. I just want to let you know that.
I think the pleasure of this councilman is that we don't go through this tonight and then just turn around and rewrite it. That, to me, makes no sense.
Well, and then you can, so you can, you can defer part of this, the ones that are issued to a date certain, I mean, down the road, and then, and then we improve the rest of it.
With, with, no, no, your, 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 your other comment was also about the same.
So this, so this is really, the suggestion is to take off, it would be Council Bill Two to take off from now, is that what? Or, or is it just a portion of Council Bill Two? Which, what's the pleasure of counsel, which would it be? Which amendment are we talking about?
Amendment One and Amendment 6.2.
B, yeah. Of Council Bill Two, that's correct.
Council Bill Two, that we would propose tabling.
Not tabling, we'd continue for a date certain.
Not tabling it, what'd you?
No, continuing, continuing to another date, to a future date. That's fine. So that, without understanding, we can then take up these.
Which one's two and?
One and 6.2. So we could proceed tonight to, for motions on Council Bill One, Council Bill Three, Council Bill Four, Council Bill Five, and all other parts of Council Bill Two.
The, the only thing is related to Amendment Four of Council Bill Two is if there's specific things that you want that are different from what's proposed in terms of the notification and publication, please note that in your motion.
Yeah, I, as far as that one goes, I'd, I'd like to see it increased to 1,500 feet. I think with our large lot makeup here in, in the city, I think it makes sense to have a little bit broader, as Laura suggested, I think it makes sense to have more disclosure to our public instead of less.
I agree.
So we could pick up a few more resident surrounding would be good.
So here, here we go, I'm, I'm going to take.
Let's take them one at a time.
I know, the first one will be pretty easy.
One at a time, okay.
I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill One, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article Six of Chapter Two of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the powers and duties of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call, please.
Counselors Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay. Council Bill Two for a second. How can I refer to these, are they referred to in here as sections or? Okay, well, let me try this. I move to approve on second and final reading, Amendments Two, Three, Five, Six Point One, Six Point Three, and Six Point Four of Council Bill Two, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Articles Two, Three, Seven, and Nine of Chapter 16 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the city's zoning regulations.
Second.
I think that does it, is that, is that right?
I'm going to come back to it, and then I'm going to continue the others. So that's everything else.
If, if I heard you correctly, Six Point Three was included in that?
Yep.
And there was some discussion about revising that.
Oh, yes, okay, so, sorry, you're right, take out Six Point Three. So instead, it's Amendments Two, Three, Five, Six Point One, and Six Point Four.
That sounds right. Motion to second on that. Any further discussion? I think that does it.
Okay.
Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, Laura.
Counselors Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve on second and final reading, Amendment Four of Council Bill Two, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article, which article is that?
Sixteen.
Seven? Article Seven of Chapter 16 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the city's zoning regulations with the following amendments, that the, that the distance of mail notice be increased from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet of the boundaries of the subject property, and that in Section E under publication, that the requirement that published notice shall be printed in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Cherry Hills Village be maintained.
Say the last part again, what about maintained?
Requiring the newspaper. So leaving, leaving the words printed in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Cherry Hills Village and provided on the city of Cherry Hills Village.
And I know that it's not, I know that it's not a state mandated requirement to do this, but are we going to also add in there the requirement that it be website, or is that a?
And, and it's already in there, and provided on the city of Cherry Hills Village website. So I'm just leaving, I'm suggesting that we take that stricken language and put it back in. Yeah. Under E standards for required notices, one publication should read, published notice, published notice shall be printed in a newspaper of general circulation in the city of Cherry Hills Village and provided on the city of Cherry Hills Village website.
Yep, I'd second that.
Okay, you have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call, move.
Counselors Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, I move to approve on second and final reading, Amendment Six Point Three of Council Bill Two, Series 2022, bill for an ordinance amending Article Nine of Chapter Council Bill Two, Series 2022, Bill for an Ordinance Amending Article Nine of Chapter 16 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the city's zoning regulations with the following amendment. That the definition of principal structure be changed to read, principal structure means the one structure that facilitates the primary use of the property, and then continues with the second sentence as it stands.
Second.
Do we have that? Got it? Good. Any other discussion? I think that does it, too. Okay, I'll take a roll call, Laura.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
Okay, now for the two remaining, what date?
Just.
As staff would.
That's what I'm looking at.
I just want to ensure that Mr. Workman is available on April 19th and make sure you're not out of town.
No plans to be out of town.
Great. That means I won't have hesitation that way. So we do have some other items on the April 5th agenda, and this may, you know, have a lot of involvement and discussion. So I would, I would request that we consider April 19th because the agenda there is much lighter.
Okay. I move to continue consideration of Amendments One and Amendment six point two of Council Bill Two, Series 2022, until April 19th, 2022.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I don't think we need, I think it's all in favor of that.
Aye.
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 Okay.
Aye.
Then, now we're moving on to Council Bill Three, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Here we go. I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill Three, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Articles Two and Three of Chapter 17 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning the city's subdivision regulations.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call.
Counselors Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill Four, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article 11 of Chapter 18 of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning construction permit pre-application, neighborhood meetings.
Second.
Motion, a second by Mr. Wheel. Any discussion? Hearing none, a roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
And then last but not least, I move to approve on second and final reading, Council Bill Five, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance amending Article Three of Chapter Twenty of the Cherry Hills Village Municipal Code concerning escrow for consultant review fees.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Laura, a roll call, please.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your work and attention. And Mr. Workman, thank you for all you, all the effort.
Thank you all for all the input and the discussion. It's, it's been a great process.
That's good.
Thank you to Mayor Christman for bringing some of this to our attention. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Okay, next item up is new business, Council Bill Six, Series 2020, approving a supplemental appropriations, first reading. We'll need two readings on this. Finance Director Sager, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Per council's direction, staff has reviewed various scenarios in which a one-time discretionary bonus can be paid to current employees. Staff has determined the one-time bonus can be paid from the city's American Rescue Plan Act Fund. The final rule the United States Treasury Department released in January allows recipients to elect a standard allowance of up to $10 million rather than calculating the lost revenue utilizing the formula that was provided in the interim final rule. The change to the final rule eases the burden for recipients like Cherry Hills Village that did not suffer any revenue loss. The final rule also allows for a broader set of uses, including the premium pay category for employees. So whether staff chooses to report the expenditures under the standard allowance category or the premium pay category, the one-time bonuses can be paid using ARPA funds. After reviewing surrounding jurisdiction bonus programs and evaluating the cost of living and merit increases that were provided to staff in 2021 and 2022, City Manager Kramer has determined that every current employee will receive a one-time discretionary bonus in the amount of $4,000. In order to receive the bonus, the employees must be a current employee or still employed by the city and was also employed by the city prior to December 31st, 2021. There was a question earlier today regarding the wording of the council bill that was included in the packet, so staff has modified the language in the council bill and has placed a revised version with the changes tracked on the dais for council's review. If approved, the supplemental appropriation will be in the amount of $201,950.84, which includes a one-time discretionary bonus of $4,000 to 46 current city employees, along with city-paid taxes and benefits. Staff is available to answer any questions council may have at this time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add a couple of comments?
You bet.
Thank you. That was very well put. I'm gonna add a few editorial comments on here as well. You know, I think we should take a moment to recognize pending council's vote. Very rarely do we get to have a situation where we have a real feel-good opportunity for everyone involved. There was a breakthrough, thanks Jessica for finding it, regarding using the funding for the ARPA as the funding source. A big part of this bonus, from my perspective, is really going to be to our staff to say thank you for sticking with us. This has been a very tough year for the la, or two years, yeah, through COVID. And even if you never had COVID, you're helping your teammates cover for COVID or your teammates' family covering for COVID. And so we've had a lot of great folks stick with us, and this is a, a bonus for all employees that we really haven't seen in this, in this village before. And the good news also with the ARPA funding is that it, it does help our, our employees understand that this will, this is not the kind of bonus that we typically do, and we won't likely be able to keep doing ad infinitum. The funding source helps, I think, relay that message appropriately. So I think our, our employees are gonna sincerely appreciate this. I think as a staff, we're excited to be able to help provide this as a real gesture of, of thanks. And I think, based on conversations I've had with all of you, I think you're gonna be excited to show that appreciation as well. So let's take a moment to acknowledge, how often do we get in local government to have a win-win-win? So I'm very grateful the way this has turned out. Thanks to Jessica for finding our, our, our path forward.
Thank you. And I, I do think, this is what the ARPA funds really were intended to do. So it's a, it is the proper use for them, and I'm just pleased that we could find a way to, to say thank you to our staff.
Can I ask a quick question?
You bet.
You know, I hear you that any staff that, so if we employed somebody November, the last day in November, so about three months ago, that they will get the $4,000 full bonus as well?
Correct.
No, no.
No.
No, they have to be employed now, though.
They have to be employed now. So if they were employed November 1st, if they, their first start date with the city was November 1st, and they're still employed, then yes, they will get the bonus. If they were employed January 1st of this year, then no, they will not.
Correct. So, so what we're saying here is that if somebody has been with us for three months, right now, they're still employed, and somebody who has been with us for the past two years of COVID, past year of COVID, they get the same $4,000?
That is correct, and this is an issue that we had a lot of conversations about. When we look at the actuals of the number of employees that we're talking about here, it's not a huge number at all.
Okay.
And, and I will tell you the number of challenges that it would create to start to make value judgments on, okay, this person's only worth 50% of what these other people are worth, based on an arbitrary decision that we would have to make about what the cutoff time is, would, would create so many challenges and so many frustrations that it runs the risk of deflating that feel-good opportunity that I just referred to. So my, my recommendation, this is not staff, this is my recommendation, is that it's a set amount for all employees. Again, the number of folks that, that, under your scenario, that would be impacted, one could argue differently than somebody who's been here the full two years, is really small.
Okay. No, no, it sounds good. You know, I mean, I rely on you as a city manager making that decision, to be honest with you. That's all.
Any other, well, I guess I'll entertain a motion first, and then we can have the discretion following the motion.
Do you have a comment? Okay. I, I move to approve Council Bill Six, Series 2022, a bill for an ordinance of the City of Cherry Hills Village, amending the 2022 budget and approving the supplemental appropriation in the American Rescue Plan Act Fund for one-time discretionary employee bonuses on first reading.
I have a motion to go here, a second.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion now? Counselor Sheldon, or Counselor Blum, you asked for something first?
Yeah, I, I just want to thank the staff on this. It's an issue that I initially raised, I think, back in November, and for Jessica to find a way to do this, it did not come out of our excess funds at the end of the year. I think it's a great job done by both you guys on this. I want to thank them.
Likewise, I'd like to thank staff for doing this, but really, for me, I'd like to thank Ms. Diffendal. I think you're the one who brought it to, at least, to my attention, that maybe there was a way for us to show our appreciation to our staff for sticking around with us, and not just the police department, but all of our staff and being here through the, through the hard times. So thank you for bringing it to my attention.
Any other comments for council? Counselor Wheel?
I certainly share, thank you, Mayor. I certainly share the gratitude that everybody else has expressed. I, I just, for my own clarity, you know, I had the concern that the way it was originally written would, in effect, open opportunities for folks backward. In Katie's motion, have we incorporated the revised language, or do we need to make an amendment to do that?
I don't believe so. You had an amended version on the dais presented for council's consideration, and that is simply a change to a whereas, which is a recital and not a non-binding, but it does illustrate the intent, which is as determined by the city manager. And the full intent of this ordinance is just to make the supplemental appropriation.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yep.
Counselor Safavi, gentlemen?
I just want to take this moment as well. Chris, you're doing a great job promoting teamwork and camaraderie. This is what, what the city has been and what, what you're continuing to promote. So again, thank you to all the staff. We're doing a great job. So it's, it's a well-deserved bonus, and I hope you enjoy it.
All right, this is just first reading, so we do need a roll call on this as well. So I'll take a roll call. Are you sure? Counsel Sheldon?
I think this isn't scheduled for public comment, but there's been a request for public comment on this particular item, so that's really the mayor's.
I'll allow it, absolutely. If you have a comment, please approach the left turn.
Thank you, Mayor. Jim Diffendal, 5701 East Stanford Drive. Quick clarifications. Jessica, thank you so very much for finding this. I cannot thank you enough for what you do to the city, for the city. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Also, quick question, when it talks about people that are currently employed, two things that I have that are concerned to me. We publicly have stated that one of our officers who was shot in the line of duty is, has turned in that person's resignation, correct? Would that person receive this bonus? That is one of my questions and concerns.
I, I would offer to you that we will have the opportunity to evaluate that.
Okay.
By the amendment that is on their desk that allows for city manager discretion.
Thank you. Secondly, when we talked about the budget, one thing that wasn't clear as a resident from this point of viewpoint, the last time you spoke publicly, the budget said up to 4% increase, right? So you had the two and a half percent for everyone, and it said eligible employees could get the extra 1.5%. Something that bothered me that I didn't realize at the time was that some of our employees, first responders, were not eligible for that extra one and a half percent for merit increases because, given how their pay is structured. What I would like to see somehow is if there is something in that ARPA to make up that merit increase, that they would get the same total compensation that everyone on this side of the street gets, to make it fair. Because we have talked about being equitable, and I think this goes a long way. $4,000 is such a huge thing. But again, I'm gonna push the council for something to make it more equitable, that we are missing for the non-eligible employees of our city could not get that 1.5% because of how their structure is. So I was wondering if we can find that one and a half percent for them to make it equitable across the board.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Sorry.
I don't know, that's something we answered on. This eligibility is not something that is, is something that is much more complicated. So, but deserving of further thought and discussion, and you're welcome to do that with the city manager and me or anybody on council, but I think there's a lot more issues involved in the eligibility that would need to be addressed.
But there is discretion at the city manager level now to administer this, what we, what we're about to adopt tonight, correct?
For the $4,000. For the $4,000.
But not, not the, not the merit-based one of the.
No, no, that's, that's not within the city council, city manager's discretion right now. That's a legal.
Okay. But thank you guys so very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And any further discussion? If not, we do need a roll call. This is the first reading. So, roll caller.
Counselor Safavi?
Yes.
Counselor Wheel?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Gallagher?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yes.
Counselor Blum?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Thank you, everybody. We will then recess now at, I have a 7:52, recess the, the regular meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council and go into a meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board. I'll call it to order now at 7:52. Roll call, please, Laura.
Board Member Safavi?
Here.
Board Member Wheel?
Glad to be here.
Board Member Brown?
Here.
Chair Stewart?
Present.
Board Member Gallagher?
Here.
Board Member Sheldon?
Here.
Board Member Blum?
Here.
All right, first item is the consent agenda. Does anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion about this? If not, I think this is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There we go. We now have regular notice and official seal. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. We'll adjourn now. I have a 7:53. I will adjourn the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village Southmore Circle and Hudson Parkway General Improvement District Board and reconvene into the meeting of the Cherry Hills Village City Council. I'll just have a brief update, a few comments, mayor's report. We did have a CML board meeting, and our city attorney last time mentioned the amicus, the, the legal group, legal, what you call yourself, the legal, amicus committee of the CML, recommended to the board joining in, taking a position on the Coolman case, which is the term limits case and how that applies and how it's calculated. The board approved that recommendation, the policy committee, so CML will be filing that. There was discussion about whether they could get it done before November. My initial thought is that's unlikely, but they might. They've, they're thinking about going directly to the Supreme, not, in the Carlos Supreme Court instead of bypassing a court of appeals. If not, it's gonna be kind of an open issue for what happens in, in November and affects a lot of municipalities, but we'll, we'll see, we'll see how that goes and how fast the briefing is. I think everybody wants it. The petitioners want it, plaintiffs want it because they want the mayor out. And on the other side, the municipalities want it decided quickly so they, they know what to advise, and municipal lawyers want to know how to advise their clients about whether they can run and how that, how it's all going to work. So it's all, it's all up in the air, and I'll keep you advised. We did have a meeting with, also, the, the board has, I think as I explained to you earlier, the board has, has agreed, has signed on to initiated legislation from CML to modify the Excel statute, the undergrounding statute, and we're under discussions now with language about how that will be done. The general counsel of CML has proposed language and. And we had a call with CML lobbyist and the general counsel and Excel and the mayors of Littleton, Greenwood Village, and Inglewood were on the call as well to explain our concerns to Excel. So we're still discussing the, discussing how that might happen. There will, there will be something coming out, certainly.
This is specific to bidding public burying of power line projects? Is what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Bidding, bidding.
Yeah. The, the major thing is, the thing everybody agrees on is there is a provision now in the statutes that prohibit competitive bidding. I think everybody's on board, even Excel, saying that's going to come out. The rest of it is, is being, is being discussed now between Excel and CML. And, and we will probably raise it with Metro Mayor's Caucus as well. So, and there'd be a lot of people interested in this issue. On Metro Mayor's Caucus too, just to report, we'll have a meeting tomorrow. Our, our annual retreat, which will be by Zoom tomorrow morning, unfortunately, we won't meet. But just an update on that, I've been nominated to the executive committee of the Metro Mayor's Caucus. So that's a group of about six of us who will be, who are leading the Metro Mayor's Caucus. So that, that terms for a couple of years.
And that's nothing but good for the village. That, that's great news.
Well, it's another, it's another thing we can leverage on, on Excel and other matters as well, so. All right, that's my report. Um, Councillor Blum?
Uh, I, I just have a question, no report, but I've got a question. When they did this work on Bellevue, I don't know who was burying cable or whatever they were burying, all the streets or all the sidewalks were marked up with red, green, yellow, and mostly in your neighborhood, Randy. Are they responsible for cleaning that up? Or is that something that we let go till it takes care of itself 10 years from now?
They are responsible for removing that. It's, when we made the changes to the construction and excavation standards, we added that, that those marks must be removed. Until the work is fully done, they don't have to remove those. And some of those marks are put on by my staff, requiring the replacement of certain sections of that sidewalk. So that project won't be done probably until April or May, but we will follow up and make sure those marks are removed. Thank you.
Just one thing. I know we're tracking an ongoing code update list, so we can continue updating our code every, every other meeting or so. We've, seems like we're. I look back now at what we did with Todd Messenger and David Foster was in here tonight telling us about all the inconsistencies in that one section about equestrian. I wonder if we had somebody audit what Todd did originally, how many other inconsistencies we'd find. Anyway, to the point. This is the second or third person now, when Mr. Johnson came in tonight and talked to us about that property owner at Quincy and Franklin about the trees being cut down. Remind me, Paul, if you can, do we have this particular item on our long laundry list of agenda items to look at as far as updating our code?
Yes, we do, and it's scheduled for this year.
Okay. For this year, I mean, it's February 1st right now. When you say this year, I mean, I assume we're gonna get to it before fourth quarter?
That's correct. It's, it's in, it's anticipated to come before council at some point this summer.
Okay. Thank you, that was all I had.
No report. Councillor Brown?
Um, no report.
Councillor Wheel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, um, just a quick update. Cherry Hills Farm HOA meeting, I don't think we're gonna see anything in, in the near future about Comfort Station or, you know, any of the other topics that have come up and sort of circling around that. That's been pretty well tabled. They did approve the funding 50% for the Bellevue median to take that existing turnpocket and make it, remove the curbing that's, that's there and make it double stripes so that there's a safe harbor for people exiting, to go, exiting Cherry Hills Farm to go eastbound on Bellevue. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councillor Safavi?
Couple of more community-related news than city news. I'm not sure if everybody's aware, but for second year in a row, Colorado was, was number one for women-led startups. That's pretty impressive. Second year in the nation for the number of the startups that were started by women in Colorado. That's, so I hope everybody's proud of that. Second thing, I spent some time on Zoom with the mayor of Aurora, their two councilmen, the two CEOs of our local hospitals, the representative from the CUNDU, President, Office of Presidents. It's all around the Fitzsimmons Innovation Center, the startups, everything that is happening around that area, it is really, really encouraging. And the number of the biotics that like to come to this area is, is pretty amazing. And I think it's gonna be something that I hope Colorado keeps promoting. I also spent some time with the, in Boulder, with their innovation center, and there are some amazing companies that are popping out there. So in general, this is just really encouraging for what is, what is happening around here with tech and biotech. So anyway, that's all.
City manager?
If we, if, you have, any department directors have any updates? No, no. Uh, I only have a couple. I've seen you guys plenty, you're tired of hearing from me today. First of all, I just wanna say thanks for what an amazing job you all did today during the retreat. I thought it was a great conversation. I felt like we really helped everybody get on the same page and start rowing the boat in the same direction. So I think that, I call that a success. Is there still a lot of heavy lifting, still a lot of tough conversations we need to have? For sure. But, but we won't get to those without a day like today. So thank you to council for that. One more time, I just wanna say thank you for your consideration for that, approving that bonus. I really do think that that is, uh, gonna be a, a ray of light in what has been, for a lot of folks, a dark two years. So thank you for your consideration of that. Council might remember that the MOU that we signed with the land preserve for Quincy Farm required monthly meetings to work towards these annual plans that would be submitted. We have our kickoff monthly meeting tomorrow. So we're excited to have that and get the ball rolling there. As of now, we are still scheduled to be open tomorrow. I can tell you, while we've been sitting here, every school district in the metro area has closed for tomorrow. We may have some employees working from home because their kids can't go anywhere, but we are still scheduled to be open. If it does change, we'll still be open, we just may not have the doors open, but we'll still have operations. What's that?
Somebody's working. Wow, it's out in the driveway, parking lot.
Well, I'm hoping that you all, we could, what they're doing is actually attaching blades to the front of your cars right now. So when we're done, if you can just do a couple laps around the neighborhoods, that'd be great. But anyway, if, I will say, if we do close City Hall, we will still be open for business. It's just, stay tuned. Jay and I have a schedule worked out about how we'll make that decision.
Just an update on the, on the chief, police chief?
Yeah, we have the scheduled posting, it's closed February 18th, I believe, is the date. So we already have over 30 applications in, which is just great. I can't tell you how tickled I am at such a big number so early. So we have changed a few things to try and make it go faster. Our consultant's gonna be doing some interviews, more of an initial kind of interview with applications as they come in the door, in an effort so that we can work towards interviews, final interviews, much earlier than we had previously laid out for you two weeks ago. So maybe even, you know, early March.
But we're anticipating the interim chief for a while, or is that?
So, yeah, the, the scheduled celebration of the chief's career has been pushed back to the March 1st date here at City Council. And so that has changed since we discussed that last. So, so, so we, we get to keep her for another couple of weeks.
Good.
And thanks to the chief for that.
That's good news.
A quick question, when's Ralph's last day?
Not till May, I can't. Oh, so it's not really, it's a joke, it's not really true.
Yeah, we wish.
Um, I, we, it's on the schedule before then to come to council. What's the, March 15th, we'll.
Wow, that's coming up, we need to make sure that we.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that question, appreciate that. Uh, city attorney, any question? City, city clerk doing over. All right, that's it then. Without objection, we stand adjourned at 8:05. Thank you, everybody, we'll see you next time.